It's called, City of Marine City Commission Meeting to Order. Marine City Fire Hall, 200 South Parker, Thursday, April 18th, 2019, 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabash.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Mr. Callahan is absent this evening. Commissioner Flossin.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Here.
City Manager Levin.
Here.
Can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Callahan?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to communications, I need a motion to receive and file departmental activity reports, Marine City area run reports, planning commission meeting minutes, March 11th, and 2018 millage rate comparison.
So moved.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on any of that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Public comment, anyone in attendance is welcome to address the city commission. Please state your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes. This is the time for you to raise issues. The commission will not respond, but the issues will be followed up upon as necessary. Hearing none, we'll move on then. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to make one addition. I'd like to make a motion to add a closed session, item 14C, to consider the purchase or lease of real property, MCL 15.268.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. I need approval for the city commission regular meeting minutes, April 4th, 2019.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions, corrections, or deletions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. City commission closed session minutes for April 4th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. No consent agenda tonight, so we're going to move on to the unfinished business. This will be a second reading and adoption of the fireworks ordinance, number 2019-005. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-005 of the fireworks ordinance.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on the fireworks ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes. Now we're moving on to the parks plan. Could you explain a little bit of that before we get started?
Sure. So, at a meeting, I think it was about March or so, we had given to planning commission the project to do a little bit of an inventory and consider potential things for all of our parks for future development. This kind of stemmed out of the fact that we've had a lot of requests for things in our park, and we have since placed a moratorium putting things in the park, waiting for this study. Planning commission split up into a couple of different groups and went through the parks, they did a little bit of an inventory, and came up with proposed ideas for the parks. This is the final report from them. Joe Moran, the Chair of Planning Commission, is here also if you have any questions.
You weren't able to get the whole inventory in, though?
I'm sorry, what?
The inventory, you weren't able to get the whole thing done due to weather?
We did, yes.
Did you? Oh, I saw something in the minutes that, and I just, you know.
Yeah, no, we had to go out on a couple of separate occasions. Obviously, the weather was a real pain in the neck this year. But they did, they went out and, I got to thank the guys, they did a really great job. They took pictures and made notes and all kinds of things. Elaine has all of the pictures that they took. But they did a really great job. Really, really pleased with the way they stepped up to do it. The bulk of the report that you have before you, if it's what I looked at, is an inventory and a recommendation, but there was also a large section that Elaine did not put in there because it went to maintenance, stuff that needed to be fixed. So we have pictures and all kinds of things of rusting posts and crumbling seawalls and things of that nature. So they did a really good job. It's pretty comprehensive.
The one on the Ward Cottrell, that's actually the Ed Kleeman Little League field. I'll have her fix that.
Okay.
It does have a name on it.
Okay.
For a portion of it.
Yeah, part of the, the...
The high school...
Questions we had was who's taking care of what, as far as shrubbery in trees and monuments and things like that. So if there's something like, a sign needs to be fixed, well, is it a rotary sign? Is it a lady civic sign? Is a, you know, that kind of has to be determined, but they did indicate where they thought...
Well, I know on this one you had here that you weren't sure if those were, those two things are high school property, those are leased to the school.
Right.
And then the only thing we have is the Little League field on that.
Okay, that's the tennis court?
Where the old tennis courts used to be, that parking lot?
Yeah.
And then the Little League fields.
Yeah, they had, I know they had a lot of questions about that tennis court, whether it was still a tennis court or was it a parking lot?
No, they moved them and built new ones over in the other part of that parking lot that they lease.
Okay. They also had some questions about, is that city property? We've leased it to the school, but is it still city property?
Yes.
And can people come and play on the tennis court, for example? And if so, we probably need some signage there that says, yeah, here's what's here and here's who can use it, kind of thing.
Well, it'll also depend on the bond vote.
That, that too, yeah.
Why wouldn't we have ladders already on?
All the seawalls, they have emergency ladders.
Built into the, just, oh, okay. So the emergency ones are there, okay.
I thought they were removed. According to what the guys said, they had been removed.
Oh, they're built into the seawall?
They're still there? Okay.
Yeah, I know, I had to find them all before.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, you didn't have to test it yourself.
No, I would just, as an emergency, in case we're out there, it's just...
Yeah.
...ladder on the exit every year.
Right. But those are external ladders, what we, what Mike...
They're in between the slats, sort of, yeah.
Yeah. But those, we don't identify them, though, either, though, do we?
Maybe ought to paint them yellow or something, you know?
If you fall in, you can see.
Okay, well, all right, I'll take your word for it.
In the daylight.
I'll take your word for it.
All right. Thank you. Anyone have any more questions on it?
I have a question.
It would really be nice. I'll talk about this at our budget meeting. I don't have any questions, we're good.
I think the only real recommendations we had were on the maintenance issues, and Elaine has those.
Okay.
So if Mike hasn't gotten them already, he will, and...
Yeah, he's, he's got the list. You know, every spring, he's got maintenance items. A lot of those are general things that every spring, he's got to go out and do. There's always some painting and repairing, things like that that needs to be done. Some may be a little bit more involved, but Mike's got the list, so he'll be working on that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. I know I break it, have I?
Anything else has anything, we need a motion to receive and file.
So moved. Support.
Any other questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to Friends of City Hall, waiving of the tap fee.
I'm Judy White, I'm the new president of Friends of City Hall. Thank you for putting me on the agenda for tonight, so I can come and ask for this waiver. I probably have a lot of company in my paranoia about fire, and this week didn't help me at all with the events at Notre Dame, Paris. Like Notre Dame, Paris, city hall interior skeleton is a post and beam, 135-year-old slow-growth forest wood, which I'm sure is very dry now. So in order to occupy the building, the building inspector said you have to do two things. You have to put in a fire suppression system, and you have to put in heat in the building. We've been very fortunate in that a heating system has been given to us, not only the furnace, but the ductwork and the installation. And that's wonderful, because that would be, of course, very expensive. Nobody's giving us a fire suppression system, we have to buy that. At the moment, the best I know is it's $80,000. We're struggling to raise that. We're not quite at that total right now. We hope to be shortly. The tap-in fee is part of modernizing city hall. The pipe that serves city hall right now, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a one-inch diameter pipe, and is very old and very outmoded and inadequate to serve a fire suppression system. Typically, those systems require a six to an eight-inch diameter pipe, tapping into the main and then coming into the building, into the pumps and what have you, associated with the suppression system. The connection that we're going to have to make to the main will be across the north side of the property to the main that runs along Pearl Street, rather than try to excavate under the road and break up cement and what have you to connect on Broadway. So it's a, it's a long run, it'll be a long trench, a lot of pipe and what have you. And the fee that the city charges, over $6,000, is a real stumbling block for us. So I'm here to ask you if you could please waive that. What we are investing in for this fire suppression system is, I think, a great gift to the city. It is the first time that the building will be outfitted with a suppression system. I think that that is of critical necessity. I think it is great safety and preservation function for the rest of, certainly our lifetimes and deeply into the future. So, given that we are, you know, presenting and giving that to the community, I'm seeking your help, just with the tap-in fee, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve waiving of the tap?
Mayor, I put in a motion to waive the tapping fee of $6,250 for Friends of City Hall for the building.
Second.
Can a motion second. Any questions on the waiving of the tap fee? What?
Mike, one question, the water main on Pearl Street, is that in good shape, bad shape?
Yeah, it's a 12-inch that was installed in 1979.
So we're good there?
We're good there.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
When the lease that I thought, unless I'm wrong, that all the main, that we did all the maintenance grass, all that stuff there, but they were to do all the improvements, I have a, this $6,250 for a tap fee, that, that has to be paid for by somebody, and I just don't know why, if I was doing it, we would end up having to pay the tap fee ourselves as a contractor.
It's our building.
But the agreement for the lease was that they were to do all the improvements. That's all I am saying.
Anybody have anything else?
Would you like a roll call vote on that?
Yes, we have to have one.
Yep. Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Flossin?
No.
Commissioner Merchant?
No.
Commissioner Verkaman?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion fails.
All right. Moving on to Little League improvement.
Mayor, commissioners?
My name is Kyle Adams, I'm a representative, actually the secretary for the Marine City Little League. And I'm coming to you tonight asking for some field improvements we're looking to do. I heard you earlier talk about park plans and things you went around and seen regarding the Ward Cottrell Field, over on Ward Street, and also the Little League. Every year, we do a field cleanup day. We actually replaced mini picnic tables, benches, painted and spruced up a lot of the dugouts and set benches, and a few of the other things that are necessary, the shrubbery that's all around that building, we ended up cutting and cleaning that up. We do a lot of field improvements to those. And on top of those improvements, we're, improvements, excuse me, we're looking to do is a lean-to, if you will, a add to the King Road facility. So we're looking to add a 18-by-21 stand or shed with a seven-foot roll-up door. I did send that to Ms. Baxter, a sketch of that, what we're looking to do, and we'd like to run that the entire length of the, the building as it is right now. What that would do is that would allow us to separate our field prep tools, the lawn mowers, some extra signage that we have in there for possible upgrades in the future, like the scoreboards that we had off of another field, and some other things, because as we do have the mariner classing and a lot of other things, the concessions fill up really quick and it's hard for us to keep that inventory. So that is one of those improvements that we're looking to do. The next one is also, if you look out there, King One and King Two, we call it, or Field One and Field Two, those have dugouts over for those children. The, on the T-ball field, that kind of faces that west northwest side, does not, we were looking to add those dugouts over top. But to do that, and to do it safely, we would ask to remove part of that berm that is behind that. There's a dirt berm that runs from pretty much the third baseline all the way around to the first baseline. We would like to just remove that berm just behind the dugouts, and then around and back to the, the first baseline dugout. And then anything we would do, we would slope and trench that back to the drain that's just to the east there. Our last one is also, we've talked in the past about adding some fencing to the third base and first baseline and continuing that fencing, because not only do we use that for the T-ball field, but we also use that for 6U and 8U, and those kids can crush it. So we'd like to extend that gra, that fence line to separate that field from the spectators, if possible. And that would go out to the berms that are out in the outfield lines on both the first and third baselines.
Have you showed all this to Mike and what you are looking at doing?
I have not personally, but I know that our President, Dan Vandevire, has in the past have came up with this.
I have not walked it yet, have not seen, well, physically seen what they're going to do.
Mm-hmm.
But what they have in here, I feel it can be done, but I'd still like to walk with them first, just to make sure that slopes and the drainage and everything else is going to be going the right way.
Okay, sir.
And then last thing that's not on here, we, I heard you talk about a park plan. I put in for a grant this year for about $56,000 from Honda. Honda offers grants to Little League programs, so we actually put in for a, I believe it was 60-by-40 building that we proposed to put on the site to offer for the Little League. I would like to, if it ever came to fruition, I mean, grants are very fickle, I also work for, part-time for the Marine City Fire Department, and I write grants there, so they're very hard to get. But if it does happen, I'd like to get back with the city commission meeting on a place to put that, if that does come to fruition, and hopefully make it a multi-use facility, if possible, so.
Anybody have any questions?
With the, with the park plan that we have for improving, that, that's the, the King Road Park, right, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, is it going to interfere with anything that you got there?
Oh, yeah, we have to take a look and see the proposed plan and see if it's in effect.
Okay.
Off the top of your head, we don't have any city, or any city utilities in that area anyway, do we?
If they bought that whole area, they're going to have to run a brand-new sewer system and water outlet.
I meant for, because that one's a...
That's a totally...
That's still a pipe dream, but I meant for the, for the extension of the concession. Is there...
Oh, no, they're fine with that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they're fine with that.
Okay. I would like to see if we can get a motion to approve this to, as long as conditional that Mike walks through, and there's nothing in the way underground.
I'll make a motion to approve the Little League improvements contention on DPW approval.
Support.
Anybody else have any questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thanks, guys. Moving on to request for proposals for engineering services.
Per our last meeting, when we got the proposal from Tetra Tech, and I was requested to put together an RFP, I prepared that along with the dates that we would be having the information due at this point, just looking for approval to move forward with this. I do note that Ken, with Tetra Tech, is here in the office, in the audience, I don't know if he has anything to say on this or not.
Just to basically show our interest and support.
Anybody have any questions on it? Well, can I get a motion to approve it?
I move that we approve and proceed with the request for proposals for the engineering, or I'm sorry, the management and maintenance of the wastewater treatment facilities.
Second.
Motion second. Any other questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to setting up the public hearing date for the 2019-2020 budget.
I'll make a motion to, to set the public hearing for the 2019-2020 proposed budget for May 16th at 7:00 PM at the Fire Hall.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on the public hearing?
What date is that? Is it Thursday?
Yeah, it's a regular meeting.
Yeah, just a regular meeting.
Okay. What are the dates next, next week, the three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, for...
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
22nd, 23rd, and 24th.
For any budget meetings, if anybody's interested, next week, big fun.
23rd, 24th, and 25th, sorry. 23rd, 24th, 25th, 6 to 8 PM.
Okay, okay. Here.
Here, at the Fire Hall.
There's no more questions on the public hearing? Can I get, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next, we're moving on to crack sealant. Waive competitive bid, waive competitive bidding for crack sealant.
Okay, I'll explain this one, since we got all new people again. Every year, we do a crack sealant. We order our crack sealant through this company, and we get the machine for free. The only one that does it, that will give you a machine for free, the price actually went down a half a cent from last year, too. It's 98, 0.985, I do believe, last year was 99 cents a pound. So, and they do competitive bidding with, throughout the state for the crack sealant in the south state of Michigan, Central County, everybody. So this is a good program we have. You know, we had to go rent that machine with it, we can tack on another two grand a month or just to use it. And then most of the time, I get this machine for three or four months at a time, for free.
And then you can use it as filler when the weather permit?
Yes.
Well, can I get a motion to waive competitive bids?
So moved. Second.
Motion support on waiving competitive bids. Any questions on the waiving of the competitive bid? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I need a motion to, we need to purchase?
Purchase, yes.
Purchase the crack sealant for...
There ain't an amount on there yet because we don't know how much we need.
Okay. Do you want a motion, you can tell me how much you need?
We won't know that until I run out. Usually, I spend anywhere from $4,000 to $6,000 on crack sealant.
You want it to not exceed?
$6,000?
You're killing me.
I know. I, sometime, this year, I think it's going to be a bad year.
We get lots of cracks.
Lots of cracks, the roads opened up really bad, and I'm thinking I'm probably going to go through a lot of material. And I hate to come in and tell you a price and then come in over.
I, I think that you could probably make a motion to utilize the firm and not to exceed the budgeted amount.
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
That's fine. Somebody like to give me that motion?
Mike, this is just for the streets, you're not going to do anything with the bike path?
I do the bike path, all the parking lots, streets, anything that needs it, we do it.
So motion to contract with the firm and not to exceed the amount budgeted for crack sealing.
That's my motion.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on crack sealing? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to financial business, disbursements including payroll for $213,435.86. Need motion to approve.
Mayor, I have a motion to approve the total disbursements including payroll of $213,435.86 and 86 cents.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Verkaman?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to preliminary financial statements, can I get a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions on the preliminary financial statements? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to city manager's report.
Since my reports, I've attended the TIPA and Fire Authority meeting, and I'm also happy to announce that thanks to our in-house grant writer, Michelle Goodrich, we have made it past the first hurdle for a grant application that we put together for a little parklet in front of the DPW. This was something where it was a preliminary design that they were looking for, and it was a very narrow amount of time. We will have some information coming to the board for consideration in the future. That's it.
How much was the grant?
I don't remember, I think maybe about $40,000.
Okay.
And no match required?
Agreed.
Great.
What's a parklet?
So a parklet is kind of like a small version of a park, kinda similar to a pocket park. This grant, the theme for what we're doing is kind of music, so there are activities in the park that are music-oriented.
Okay.
Didn't know there was a parklet.
It's sponsored by, I believe, Kaboom.
Oh.
So interesting grant opportunity, and we kinda had to jump on it and didn't really have a lot of time to, um, put something together and get it before the board. But we will, in, in the near future.
Very cool.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Well, let's move on to Commissioner Privilege. Cheryl, would you like to start us off?
Yes. I would. As we all know, or we should know, that there's gonna be a special election coming up May 7th. And I just want everyone to know that, first off, I'm, it's not our job to tell you how to vote, but it is our job to encourage everyone to vote. And I don't know if everybody realizes this, but you can actually vote with an absentee ballot. You can go to the city clerk, request a ballot, and, am I right that, like, for me, I, I already voted, so you're gonna mail me in, for future elections, right?
Because you're placed on a permanent absentee list.
I'm placed on a permanent absentee list. So I would just encourage everyone to do this, because number one, it used to be for, you know, absentee ballots for the elderly, because you never knew how the weather was gonna be on voting day and things like that. But now, we're very busy people, and, you know, this is a way that, you know, all of a sudden, you go, oh, my goodness, it's voting day and it's 6:30, and I haven't got to the polls yet, you know? So voting with an absentee, absentee ballot encourages you, number one, to vote, and it just makes it easy. You can sit at your dining room table at home and look at the 15, 20 minutes of material and do it that way. So I encourage everyone to do that. And the last day to receive an absentee ballot is Monday, May 6th at 4 o'clock. Also, I did not know if everyone was aware of this. I know that Mike Gettrich and I have talked and, um, because I would like to purchase a park bench. And the public can also purchase park benches. We have a standard bench that we use in Marine City. The cost is approximately 1,800, right? Approximately 1,800. And what's nice about this is if, you know, you wanna dedicate that bench for a family member or a business or, you know, whatever, you can do so with a little plaque. You walk around with our DPW person, Mike, and kinda pick a spot and make sure there's no utilities and sprinklers and that kinda stuff in the way. It does take several months, but I just wanted to make the public aware that that is something, especially now with the weather breaking and people really like to sit outside, that you can get a park bench for a memorial or whatever. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Merchant?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes, and as I agree with you, with that, the study we did, did say we needed more park benches in the park, and people can get them.
Mm-hmm.
I think so.
Nope.
Nope.
Wow.
I'm the only one.
Going right through it today.
You did so well.
It's, uh, a hate being the one that usually announces this, but we lost one of our city fathers, Jim Beatty, or Red Beatty, as a lot of us knew him by, passed away. And I had the privilege of meeting him at a few coffees at the Mariner and many other places. And he knew a lot of people, he knew a lot of the history, and we keep losing these men and women, and it's truly sad when we lose one of the city elders like that. So, 'cause everybody think about, if you see family members and that, and just, please give their, our best. Also, vote on May 7th, so we can get these signs picked up and be done with it. I just want it over. I mean, I don't wanna lose my, my wonderful high school and all the history that goes along with it, and the community behind it is strong and will survive, but let's hope better heads will prevail. Next, we're gonna move on to, I need a motion to move on to closed session. If this is approved, the city will enter into closed session to review legal opinion regarding discussions and strategy for multiple negotiations for closed bargaining agreements